Good evening and welcome to the January 9th City Council Meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. Tonight, we have a very special guest who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Her name is Macy Tharp. And Macy, would you please come forward? And would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Macy for leading us. You can just step right up to the microphone. We have to ask you some questions. First of all, where do you go to school?
I go to Stillwater Middle School.
And your favorite subject?
Math.
Very good. And extracurricular activity, you told me-
I do enjoy running and I produce pay in 5Ks.
Very good. And who brought you here tonight?
My mom and dad, Melinda and Thomas, and then my sister Molly.
Thank you parents and sister for coming and doing this. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a speech pathologist.
Okay, and I did ask her where she's going to school, but I'm not going to ask her now where she hopes to go to school because it wasn't, you know, the exact answer for Stillwater, even though it was clearly a very good answer, just different than, you know. So. Counselors, any questions for Macy?
I don't have questions, but I know that you participated in the Blue Streak 5K run at Marine Technology Center, so thank you for your support on that.
Thank you.
I love your scarf.
I do, thank you.
And I'm so intrigued how you could arrange it that nicely. And I also am thinking, just a plug, if you like math, be sure to go see Hidden Figures, the movie about the women mathematicians.
Who made the men fly.
Yeah, really. I think you'll really enjoy it.
Okay, so I'm going to come down there, we're going to take a picture.
Oh, and I like your shoes. Counselors and Audi, you would like her shoes.
Tell them she's got great shoes on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So nice to meet you. Okay, now we have another special guest. Call up to the podium. Counselor Nahara, would you please come forward?
Do you like my shoes?
Nice tie.
Because you've been on vacation. Yes. Okay, so the first thing I just want to say to Counselor Nahara is that we're going to miss you. It's been such a pleasure getting to know you and working with you. It's been three years now?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll let each counselor say something if you want to, and then I will present you with what we're getting ready to present you with. Any other words?
Well, I started on the council with Counselor Nahara, and you mentioned that we had a special guest. He's really not a guest, he's part of our, he's part of us. And it's been such a privilege to grow up with you, Miguel, on the council. And I think that in whatever capacity you're able to be after this, you are always, it's clear that your dedication to the city is paramount, and you have great contributions to make. Really appreciate serving with you.
I think one of my fondest memories of Counselor Nahara is when I first called him to let him know that I was interested in running for council, and it wasn't a pause of, oh, it was, come on, you need to do this. And I think that is your personality. You are passionate, you go things with full throttle, and it will bode you well. So, we're going to miss you, but it's not the last we've heard of you, so we'll see you around.
It's been an honor serving with you, Miguel. It really has. Sitting next to you for the last almost a year, figuring out how to do this, at least trying to figure out how to do this, especially how to figure out how to mute the microphone-
Yeah. Greatest accomplishment.
-was a very, very special accomplishment for me too. But, yeah, it's, your service has been very valuable here, and we're, you know, you're not going anywhere. So, we're still going to be relying on you and asking you things, and certainly will love to see you involved in all kinds of stuff around town after this. So, thanks for putting in the time it takes to do this role.
Thank you.
Okay, and I will just reiterate one more time that you were a champion for Stillwater citizens, and that was really important. And I know if we had them all lined up here, they would say the same thing. So, just thank you for your service. Let me give you this. Presented to Miguel Nahara, January 9th, 2017, in grateful appreciation for your service on the Stillwater City Council, 2014 to 2016. And it has our names as well.
Thank you so much. And you want to take a photo?
Yeah.
Is the speech ready?
And then I'll let you say whatever you want to say.
Oh, okay. Sure. See if I can do this and not be emotional. No, I'm just kidding. I just want to say thank you so much. It's been truly an honor to serve with each of you, also with Mayor Bartley and Vice Mayor Weaver as well. Lauren and I are not going anywhere. We love Stillwater. My wife, Lauren, is back here. If we can give her a round of applause, she- If you know me, you know that I don't run without her, and she is truly the most amazing woman in my life. I love her dearly, and she has stood beside me through this time, and I'm so grateful for her, each of you. I'm so thankful to the city staff. It's been truly an honor. Dan Blankenship was saying earlier, the first time we met, which seems like so long ago, but it's just crazy to see what I've learned from the people who work here and how dedicated the staff is. So, I want to let the citizens know from someone who's seen it firsthand that these employees are truly dedicated. We have the best employees in the state and the country, and it was an honor to lead them. And I look forward to serving the city of Stillwater, hopefully in other capacities. And we aren't going anywhere. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, counselors, now we will go to the consent docket. And is, does anyone wish to remove an item?
That is that you remove item E. We'll repost that on a future date.
Okay, so item E is removed. Anything else, counselors?
Is E the, I don't know if I'm looking at the same copy-
Hampton Inn easement. We're just not ready to move on that yet.
That's F on this one I'm looking at, but maybe I'm looking at an old copy.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of four to zero. And at this time, we are going to have the ceremony of the swearing-in of Dr. John Wedlake by Judge Tanya Ron.
I've been looking at where those cameras point so bad. Okay. All right. There you go. Family in the background, all right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Wedlake-
I, John Wedlake-
-do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
...that I will support, obey, and defend-
That I will support, obey, and defend-
...the Constitution of the United States of America-
The Constitution of the United States of America-
...and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma-
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma-
...and that I will not knowingly receive-
And I will not knowingly receive-
...directly or indirectly-
Directly or indirectly-
...any money or other valuable thing-
Any money or any other valuable thing-
...for the performance or non-performance-
For the performance or non-performance-
...of any act or duty-
Of any act or duty-
...pertaining to my office-
Pertaining to my office-
...other than the compensation allowed by law-
Other than the compensation allowed by law-
...and I further swear-
And I further swear-
...that I will faithfully discharge-
That I will faithfully discharge-
...my duties of the office-
My duties of the office-
...of City of Stillwater Counselor, Office Number Three-
Of City of Stillwater Counselor, Office Number Three-
...to the best of my abilities-
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you.
And here we go.
No rest.
We're very happy to have you. Welcome, we should all say. You know that, we've all said that before.
Thank you.
Welcome one more time. Okay, at this point, we are going to the election of Vice Mayor, because we do this, Mr. Dorman, once a year.
Right, whenever you see the new counselor, you have an election.
Okay. And does anyone have any nominations for Vice Mayor?
I do. I nominate Pat Darlington.
Second.
Okay, we have, and Vice Mayor Darlington, are you ready? Are you able and ready to do it again?
I am privileged and excited.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that said, then, counselors, please vote for the election of Vice Mayor, Pat Darlington. And with a vote of five to zero, you are still the Vice Mayor.
I haven't used my cards yet.
Yes. Okay, that takes us to public hearings. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Item A, yes.
Mr. McNichol.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, staff presentation.
Mike Beatty from Development Services will be making the presentation.
Good night.
Evening. I'm Mike Beatty. We have a closing of a portion of a utility easement on West Liberty, in the northern portion of the city. This is just east of the Ivy cul-de-sac. The airport is just to the northwest there. It's on a short dead-end road. The full 20-foot easement is seen here in green. The portion that want to vacates is blue hatch area right adjacent to the house. There's a blow-up of a survey of the lot showing that the house is encroaching in the easement about less than a half a foot on the front of the house, and about quarter of a foot at the back of the house, and they have a two-foot eve. So, the request is to vacate about two and a half foot of the easement. The survey shows a gas line, a gas service to the house about 10, 15 feet away, and then right on the east property line is the power line. Those are the only utilities in that portion of the easement. There's a sanitary sewer out front, but it comes from the north and heads back to the west. So, there's at least 18-foot of accessible right-of-way there. This is a view from Liberty looking south. You can see the power poles along the property line, and the sewer manhole rights below the tree there in the shade. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Can I, I'll just ask a couple for the heck of it, because we're not going to be here long enough tonight. How does this happen? Like, is it, was it built, when the house was built, it was just over too far?
Yeah, the house has been there a long time. And I imagine when they built the house, they just didn't pay attention, you have four tenths of a foot at the front, and if their alignment's a little bit off when they're constructing, at the age of the house, I don't know that they even required a surveyor. They probably just took a tape measure off of the pins that they could find and eyeballed it. And there's not a, there's not going to be much of an impact in terms of us being able to serve any of the utilities there.
Okay. So, if it stays this way, what, I mean, it's not like we have to tell them to tear down the house or anything, right?
No, I think that's the purpose, is to kind of help them clean up their property if they go to sell it, and it shows that now that they're aware that they're encroaching in an easement, they need to do something, because that just kind of hangs over the property, the title.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, good questions. Okay, so I, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing, but there's no one to speak, so I will close the public hearing and ask for the recommendation.
Staff recommends approval.
Any more discussion, counselors?
Motion to accept or approve or whatever we're doing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept staff's recommendations for CC-17-06. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, CC-17-06 is approved with a vote of five to zero. And that takes us to item B, received public comment regarding a request for a map amendment for property at 707, oh, sorry, we are going to postpone that one.
Actually, we need you to just vote to strike the item from the agenda tonight.
Okay, so-
We'll repost notice and restart the process.
All right, so do we need a motion?
Motion to strike it from the agenda.
Motion to strike item B.
Motion to strike item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to strike item B. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, item B is stricken from the agenda. That takes us to general orders. Mr. McNichol.
I would invite Dr. John and Nancy Patton to come forward to the podium. Mayor will join me. Is it? Welcome in. About a month ago, maybe a little longer, Dr. Patton, John Patton, former mayor, councilperson, came into my office and said that he had an idea that he would like to present to the city to give the city some property to develop a welcome-to-Stillwater area at the corner of Sixth and Western. The area is elevated, it's the northeast corner, and I am pleased to tell you that not only have they made that donation, but their generosity has caused others to contribute to a fund, to fund that sign, and we have a clear understanding that it's, the purpose of that lot is for a welcome-to-Stillwater sign. We'll do, eventually, when we have sufficient funds, we'll put in some low-maintenance landscaping, and we'll find a sign that is acceptable to both the patents and the council, and we'll put that sign up. And I think it will serve a very nice purpose at that corner. So, be very visible, and we'll also remove some traffic issues from that corner. So, we're very grateful, and we appreciate it.
Yes, I, thank you. And councils, council members, anybody want to-
Well, growing up in this town, John and Nancy, thank you. That corner is an awkward corner as you're coming into Stillwater, and I can't think of a better location to clean up and take care of some of those things and have a wonderful sign that welcomes people into our wonderful town. So, thank you.
I think in combination with your contribution, donation of your time and expertise as a councilperson and mayor, this is kind of the capstone of your great part in the history of Stillwater. Thank you both.
Yes. I would just like to say thank you and just give them a-
My comments, it was, for our family, this is a family thing, you know, and it wasn't a planned event, it was an opportunity that arose at the time. And so, it was our pleasure to do it, and we will enjoy coming past that welcome sign every day.
(laughing)
So, counselors, is there a motion?
Motion to accept donation of land from John and Nancy Patton.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the gift from John and Nancy Patton. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we since, it is approved, and we sincerely appreciate their donation. That takes us to item B, the Multi-Aarts Annual Report. And Mr. McNichol?
Mike Smolin. Mike Smolin is here to provide that report. Thank you for inviting me to present the report. I'm Mike Smolin. I'm currently president of the Board of the Friends of Multi-Aarts Center. We are currently the managers, we're under contract with the city to manage the Multi-Aarts We started in 2012, and that contract runs until the end of June this 2017. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce our interim director, Margie Ponse, and we have several other board members and patrons here. Margie will help me if I run into trouble. Well, our mission is to enrich the community by providing educational and creative arts and crafts environment. And we mean arts and crafts, not just arts. In fact, we consider all of that arts. Our Friends of Multi-Aarts Center is a nonprofit organization, and we act as the management. The center is a very flexible, wide-ranging center. We have about 15,000 square feet of space and facilities available for every art you can think of, from drawing, painting, and photography, to language arts, music, and dance. Quite a range of things, I'll touch on a few of them. Some of the things that are more interesting and unusual perhaps, things like paper marbling and bookbinding. This one has been so popular, I've seen people waiting for the doors to open just to get in and get at making beautiful book covers, or whatever those are. Glass fusing, sleeping mats for the homeless. This is something that goes on every other week, and it's a very inventive idea, as well as cooking and various other things. Our specialty program includes things like the fiber arts. We have spinning wheels, we have weaving, we have knitting, sewing, and quilt-making. Some of the special events that are kind of a mainstay with our facility are things like birthday parties, tours. Groups can come in and visit our facility and see the equipment and the various types of art, and then make a craft while they're there. We offer parties for children and for adults. Raku is one of the more fun things to do, where people can work on a piece of pottery, glaze it, and take it home with them the same day. We feature a gallery for some of the more specialized artists in the community. Cover up, cover all kinds of things, from whimsical art, like collages of dignified people in the community, to some of the more spirit-oriented things. And of course, our consignment gallery, particularly popular at Christmas time, offers an opportunity for local artists to sell their artwork, where they get most of the profit, and we get a little bit too. This is some statistics that we collected over the past year. From January through October, over 8,000 people were identified as coming in and participating. These include people in classes, volunteers who've helped out in various things in the facility, they've worked in our open studio, they've participated in tours, and just generally The item I think you're probably most interested in, our facility gets a subsidy from the city of $60,000 every year, and that's visible in the graph. Through about 2014, our income was increasing, but if you'll notice, in 2014, we also had very high expenses. If we chart the net income, what, after taking out expenses, you can see that since 2014, we're on a trajectory of increasing our net income. Although we've had a decline in gross income, we've controlled our expenses quite well this past year. A little bit of where our income comes from, our $60,000 subsidy is, in the past year, was about half of our budget. Our classes and open studio are our mainstay, and you can see that that's one of the increasing items. We run a summer camp. In the past, we've had a public school program this past year that ended. We are on an upward trajectory with field trips and parties. We have a fairly stable membership, and we have had a room rental. We can provide space to organizations for their own activities. I would point out that we've been lacking the past year in our fundraising and our grant activity, and those are things that we really should increase significantly this coming spring. The sales are low because it doesn't include the Christmas gallery. This was through the beginning of, the end of November, basically. Controlling our expenses is probably the biggest thing we did in the past year in terms of our budget. You can see that our payroll and training went way down, and we utilized volunteer help extensively this past year. One of the more interesting and fun activities this past fall was the Oklahoma Arts Council Conference that was held here in Stillwater. We helped plan that, we participated in it, we had a good time with it, and I think we made a good showing with it. A lot of people visited our facility, and we had good comments from them. Basically, I hope that you all will partake- Basically, I, I hope that you all will partake of this facility and, and join us. It's a wonderful thing for our community. We have a full program of classes coming up in, in the spring. We've spent the whole last year straightening out our policies, our budget, and our program. We think we've done a pretty good job with that and we hope to show a lot more activity and fundraising in this spring period. One of the things that I think we're going to concentrate on, and I'm particularly, I think is particularly important, is to develop funds for scholarships. Classes are expensive, but they really do have to pay for themselves. We are very certain that that's, that's important to our program and the existence of the program. And we hope to raise more money for scholarships to support children and adults who can't afford the price. I'd be pleased to try to answer any questions.
Councilor's questions?
It's a wonderful facility to have in our community and I have definitely utilized the gift shop for gifts and things because it's always nice to give someone something from a local artist and all that. I did have one question. The public school program, can you kind of explain why that has ended and thoughts on?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I know the answer to that question. Margie may be able to help. I started as president in April and by April, that program had already been canceled. I, I think it has to do with the public school program, but I, I don't know the specifics.
Margie Ponce, the reason the school, public school program was cut was through the funding of the school itself. The school district contacted us and said that due to the lack of funding on their part, unfortunately, art is always one of the first things to go for and unfortunate is the children that suffer. And that's why having this art center available to children through art camp, winter camp, spring camp, and just regular art classes is amazing for the children.
Would some of the scholarships that you're talking about help take care of some of that opportunity for our children to go?
Yes ma'am. We'd like to have more camps, more after-school programs for children to come and do everything from drawing to clay to fiber arts. It helps children with math skills, with reading, and it's just overall great for kids.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful facility. If, if you have never been to the Multi-Arts Center, you should just go and stop by and go even beyond the gift shop. The gift shop is wonderful. But are there things, facility-wise, that you're thinking that you might want to increase or step up? Or facility, equipment-wise?
We, we have a glass blowing facility that's been there for a long time. It was not used the last couple of years because of the expense of gas-fired kilns. We have had a donation of electric furnaces and kilns and we hope to get that fired up in the spring. Be one of the few public facilities like this anywhere in this region, really.
Yes, and we're actually a very well-rounded facility as far as the country goes. My husband did 20 years in the Navy, so we traveled around a lot and going from one city to another, looking at different art centers. This is a state-of-the-art facility because we have everything from, you know, stained glass, fuse glassing, pottery. We have art, drawing, we have the fibers which are, include weaving, spinning, sewing, and so on. And it's just an opportunity for the community that needs to be there all the time. But glass blowing is one of the ones that, we have the equipment, we just need to have more funding and we'd like to pursue for grants so that we can expand that program.
We, we'll have a full program of classes like drawing, painting, and that sort of thing. We also have the capability in our facility for open studio. And Margie's just announced a program where we're going to have a punch card access to that where people can buy a punch card of 10 punches, come in and spend the day making art in the facility. We also will provide a punch card as one of the benefits of taking a class. So certain classes that where normally the students don't finish up within the six or eight weeks that they're there, they'll have this punch card that they can come in and finish their work. It's kind of like a little bit of drugs to allure, to get them hooked on coming to the center.
Our open studio has been very popular with our potters. Once you start playing with clay, you just want to continue making everything from mugs to bowls to, you know, simple gifts for everybody. And that was one of the things that we had in the arts program for children was they came and created pottery projects. And that's something that children really enjoyed and they came up with beautiful gifts for their parents.
I still have some of those gifts that my son made that are still on display. Yes.
I had a couple of questions on the expenses slide. I don't know if you can pull that back up or not. But just, just first on the payroll reduction, is that through elimination of, of existing positions? Or is those, are those open positions that you're going to hope to refill or is that a permanent reduction, I guess is my?
We do have an open position, so part of that is, is from that. But then we also added a little bit of staff, so that's not the, the entire thing there. I think most of it is because we've utilized quite a lot of work-study in partnership with OSU.
And then also on that same slide, I noticed that your expense for accounting services dropped to zero. Do you still have an accountant helping with the finances or is that like a volunteer thing now?
We have a wonderful student. She's a senior at OSU and she's accountant. So it has tremendously dropped our accounting. We're using, again, we're using our resources at OSU and she is a, she has been a tremendous help for us, so.
Thank you.
Like hearing that you're using resources at OSU, I think that we all recognize that there is no entity in Stillwater that can do the best that it can do without partnering, partnering with the other groups. And I, I'm happy to hear that. I'm wondering if, if Mike or Margie, you might explain Friends of Multi-Arts. How do you be a friend of Multi-Arts? What does, what do the Friends of the Multi-Arts do?
We're an organization that precedes the current center. The Friends is kind of like Friends of the Library and that sort of thing. In 2012, when the city and Friends agreed to move the management from city management to the private nonprofit management, we were the entity chosen. So we're currently managing the center, but the Friends is an organization that exists regardless of whether we're in management or not. We are anticipating that there may be some changes in the summer that possibly OSU may be taking over the management. Regardless, the Friends exist and we are undertaking to partner with OSU regardless of who's managing the, the center.
Can anybody be a friend?
Absolutely. The, the friendship is act, our friend, membership is quite cheap. I believe it's $25 a year right now. We're, we're trying to update our software a little bit so we can have a, a family membership, which would be a little bit of a break also. And we offer some benefits in terms of utilization of the center. So there's a, I believe, a 10% reduction in the price of, of classes for membership. But absolutely anybody can be a member. We have regular members, child membership, senior membership.
I would just like to thank all of the Friends of Multi-Arts for your volunteer service, for all of your, the organization that you do. This is a great partnership between the city and Friends and we applaud what you do and I'm very impressed that you controlled expenses and have goals of scholarships and the punch cards. I think that's important. I think that will benefit the community. And you're right, it is a very important benefit for our community. We thank you.
Keep, keep the word partnership strong.
Partnership, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for the report. Okay, that moves us to Item C. Mr. McNichol?
Thank you, Mayor. Special Services Director John McClain will be providing overview of proposals on management of Lakeside Golf Course.
Okay, revenue at Lakeside over the last five years has improved significantly. The city still has to provide a subsidy though. And we have a looming, looming capital expense that's fairly significant to replace all of the equipment that we use to maintain the golf course. So we went out for proposals, seeking a golf management company to see what we could do in that regard. A lot of cities have done that and it's resulted in savings in a lot of cases. We received two proposals, one from Orion Management and one from Henderson Golf. Each company is here tonight to give a brief presentation and answer any questions that you might have. They both meet the basic requirements of the proposal. There are a couple of differences. You have a table attached to your report that kind of lines out the financial differences between the two. By any measure, either proposal is cheaper over the next five years than the city continuing to operate it, which would be roughly $1.3 million cost to the city. Henderson Golf offers a fixed fee and covers the anticipated capital expense. Orion Management has a base fee. They also have a revenue incentive and the city would cover the capital expense. And how all that works out, if, if Orion Management was to increase our revenue significantly, it could be that that would take care of our capital expense as well. So I'll let each of them address that. It's not intended that you make a decision tonight. This is primarily for information so that you can go back and think about the proposals. You have copies of those. You can think about the interviews and we can make a decision at a future point. You could direct staff to enter into negotiations with the, the, one of the two consultants. Obviously, everything is negotiable and we might wind up with an agreement that's a mix of the two. So I will turn it over to the, the two companies and we're going to go in alphabetical order, starting with Henderson Golf.
Good evening. Please excuse my voice. I'm getting over something over the last week, so if I need to speak up a little bit louder, I'll have to get my dad up here to, to do this for us, so. I see some new faces here that I'm not familiar with, that it's been a long time since I've been up here in front of council, since I started working for the city of Stillwater in 2010. Is that better? John messed up our height differences here, so. Let me start this over again. Okay. My name is Michael Henderson. I am the owner of Henderson Golf Management, which is a limited liability Oklahoma company. We, there we go. Okay, we do a bunch of different things. We've done it regionally throughout Oklahoma from golf course ownership, total facility management, monthly course management, agronomy plan development, and facility renovations, business plan development, and just as-needed consultant. A little bit about myself, since I'm kind of meeting some of you for the first time tonight. My name is Michael Henderson. I'm a PGA professional. I'm originally from Texas, from the Fort Worth area. I'm one of only three Class A certified professionals in the state of Oklahoma. The Certified Professional designation is an continuing education program to the PGA of America, which encompasses about 2% of our 27,000 members. In 2014, I was named the South Central PGA Oklahoma Golf Professional of the Year, along with being the Junior Golf Development Leader in 2011, 2012, and 2014. Last year and the year before, I was a National PGA of America National Finalist for merchandising, along with the Section Merchandiser in 2013. In 2011 and 2012, I was a Top 50 U.S. Kids Golf Instructor and I was also one of the Oklahoma Chapter for the Youth Development, Player Development of the Year. And then back when I was a little bit younger and a little more flexible, I was Player of the Year in North Texas and also the Ben Hogan Award winner and I've played professionally for over 20 years. Part of my team also is my wife. She's the co-owner and the general manager of the Golf Club of Edmund. Formerly, she was teaching in the Stillwater School District. She was the gifted and talented resource coordinator for Richmond Elementary. Her responsibilities now include all accounting, finance, human resources, and compliance matters for any of the Henderson Golf properties. Before she taught in Stillwater, she was in Fort Worth. She was also in Dallas and she also taught for the city of Arlington. She was the 2013 Skyline Elementary School Teacher of the Year and she was also named a Top 100 Teacher in the state of Texas. The rest of my leadership group is my father, who's back here behind me today. He's a life member from Dallas. He currently operates Stevens Park Golf Course, which is the 18th-ranked municipal golf course in the country. And he's been there since 1987 in a public-private partnership with the city of Dallas. He's also operated facilities on behalf of the city of Fort Worth and Richardson, Texas. He's also won too many awards for me to bore you guys with here tonight, so I'm going to skip through that. In addition to my work with golf, I'm also the President of the South Central PGA. The President of the South Central PGA encompasses the states of Oklahoma, Arkansas, and the southern half of Kansas. The PGA of America is divided up into 41 geographical regions and the purpose of the PGA of America is to supply, to supply support to local golf facilities and the 27,000 members across the country. In addition to that, I'm also the Chair of the South Central PGA Junior Golf Foundation, the Chair of the South Central PGA Board of Directors, a Board Member of the Oklahoma Golf Hall of Fame. And I also sit on the President's Council of the PGA of America and I'm also the voting delegate for the state of Oklahoma for the PGA of America. I've been involved with many facilities since I was a PGA, elected PGA member in 2001. Couple most recent one would be Buffalo Rock Golf and Gun, which was formerly Cushing Country Club, which was a complete remodel that was done in 2014. From a new irrigation system to a new clubhouse to new protocols, procedures. The entire golf course went under. We rebuilt it, redeveloped it for the new owner, stepped away, put in some, did hiring, put everybody else in there. Lakeside Memorial, I've been here since 2010. Perry Golf and Country Club, we operated in 2013 as a bridge in between previous management and current management while we were looking for someone to come in and replace their longtime golf pro who had been there for 30 years. And then our last one is the Golf Club of Edmund, which my wife and I purchased in July of 2016. It's the premier daily fee facility in the Oklahoma City metro area. It's a much bigger facility than, than Lakeside is currently. One of the things that we're obviously going to provide for the, for the group here is clubhouse operations. So this will be a turnkey management proposal. So we would come in and out, do everything from tee time management, employee management, checking in daily play, collecting fees from the golfers, merchandising inventory for retail sale, management and care of the golf cart fleet, and performing starting and ranger facilities, which helps speed play along with the facility. We're going to provide a new point-of-sale system. We put a new point-of-sale system in 2010, but as technology changes, it's time for us, it's antiquated now, it's time for us to go ahead and invest and put in a new one, which that would be one of the first things that we would come in and do. We will provide an onsite manager, which has the ability to manage, operate, and maintain a quality golf operation. The onsite site manager and superintendent will provide expert oversight and retain complete responsibility for their respective area, recruit, hire, train, evaluate, member-service-oriented personnel, and work together as a team to consistently deliver high-quality and cost-effective golf services to the citizens of Stillwater. Very, very proud of our customer service. Since I took over Lakeside in 2010, we've had a complete overhaul of our employees, the way we operate, from a traditional golf facility to a very non-traditional golf facility in the way that we, we operate. We reduced our payroll payroll substantially from 2010 to 2011, and we reorganized. We have more part-time people coming behind the counter. We're hiring a more diverse staff. We have a lot of really friendly, high-energy people behind the counter, and we've done a really good job with recruitment, but also development, where we have a lot of these people that have started for us in 2010 are still currently employed by either the city of Stillwater or employed by me personally. And so, we take great pride in the people that we do bring in and how we train them and move them along through the process. Marketing was one thing that we did get away from in 2010, which was mainly print marketing, is what the city of Stillwater did. We've really moved towards all social media, internet. The new point-of-sale system integrates all of these, all of these new social media mechanisms and is constantly changing. And so, it's good to stay on top of these things, that you can reach a much broader topic, I mean, get the topic spread out much farther through social media than we can through any sort of print, print advertising. Grounds maintenance, and this is the most important, important aspect of the proposal, and it's going to be the most important decision that the city of Stillwater is going to have to make. The replacement value for the golf course is approximately $7 million. Mr. McClain told me earlier that it's on the tax rolls, I think, for about $5.5 million currently, but you have to put in the irrigation system, the greens, the buildings, everything else on top of. So, it's a very, very expensive item to have to replace. One of the things we've been very proud of is our course conditioning and the way we maintain the golf course over the past, we've maintained it over the past six years of, as our budget has continually gotten smaller and smaller and smaller, we haven't had a hiccup as far as our, our maintenance has been concerned. We have run the same equipment that was put into place in the early 2000s, so we're going on equipment that is close to 16, 17 years old. The average lifespan for this equipment is about five to six years, so we've been holding everything together with duct tape, elbow grease, and ingenuity. And so, we've come to the end of that, and that was kind of the, how this whole process got started, because we have this huge capital expenditure on the horizon, which is going to be in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 for complete replacement of our maintenance equipment. One of the things that we, the greens are always going to be the most important thing that we have to protect, and you know, we have an onsite superintendent who's worked for the city of Stillwater for 16 years. And one of the things that we'll be able to offer is familiarity with the product, with the property. We know the ins and outs. We know where everything's located. We know where, how to get to it. You know, the grass can be finicky in this type of climate. We're right on a transition zone from north to south, and so it's very difficult. We're dealing with specific golf grasses in this neighborhood and this part of the country. And so, we're very proud of our agronomy that we have in place, and our intention is to keep everybody that's employed by Lakeside Golf Course right now on staff. This is staff that I've brought in, that I, we're part of a team. We've been here for a long time, and so, there's going to be no flipping out, bringing anybody in new. It's going to be the same familiar faces, same, same practices, same everything as we move forward. As John had said earlier, I'm willing to provide the equipment. And so, as part of this contract, I would go in and purchase the equipment and be able to provide that to the city of Stillwater as part of the agreement to come in and do this. And so, I feel confident because we know how much the golf course can make. We know how much we're going to spend. We know exactly. There's no hypotheticals. There's no what if we can drive revenues up. There's, none of these question marks are out there. We have concrete, empirical data that shows exactly what this golf course can do, because we've tried everything. It's just now, it's what can we do with what we can make? The city of Stillwater is unique in a golf operation with Oklahoma State University, in the fact that our biggest months of the year, school's out. So, we lose our largest portion of our residents. They leave, and they're also with the most disposable income. That this is the sort of things they're doing for entertainment. So, we're busy in the spring, and then we really kind of die off in the summer, and then we, football season starts in the fall, so depending on how OSU's doing on football, it could really hurt revenues. So, the projections as far as what the golf course could make, it's unique in the fact that it's not going to be able to do what other golf courses can do in other cities. It doesn't have this transient population that kind of comes and goes, and, but we've seen it kind of got it figured out of where we're going to be and what we can make from this point forward. In 2010, we had a full food and beverage operation, which the food and beverage operation was losing in excess of $100,000 a year. So, what we did in 2011, we stripped it down, and we're just doing a self-service product right now. We're not making a tremendous amount of money in food and beverage, but we're not losing any, anymore. So, we're basically focusing on beverage sales. Whenever we do host tournaments, we do bring them in. We outsource the food and beverage production to local restaurants, McCallisters, Eskimo Joe's, places of that nature to come in and, and put this stuff together for us, so we don't have to keep a full-time chef on staff. Things have changed now, and so with my operation down in the city of Edmond, I have full food and beverage staff on, on the payroll now. So, we'll be able to merge both food and beverage operations to be able to deliver that sort of expectation that a customer may have to come in and get quality food, quality drink, alcohol service, and so forth. Retail merchandising, this has been one of the most difficult things in the past few years with, with golf courses, with Amazon, with eBay. We're just not seeing the retail dollars being spent at the facilities that we saw 10 years ago. So, one of the things we would be able to do is be able to combine the operations, be able to get mass buying discounts from connecting all the facilities together. We'll be able to get different pricing, and hopefully be able to sell product at a cheaper rate that they can get it online. And so, it'd make more sense for them to buy locally than going online to go purchase. Currently, Ping, Hudson &amp; Buck, Adidas, Titleist, Oakley, and PXG are all on board with this, and so we have special pricing from all of these six major manufacturers on what we use to stock the, the facility. In 2010, now this is my, this is my passion right here. 2010, we started a junior golf program, and it was just me, and I think we had six kids on, on the drive-in range in 2010. Last year, we touched over 2,000 kids. We have taken that small program and expanded it into the largest junior golf program in the state of Oklahoma. It's, I've got a dynamic staff. We have put programming into Skyline Elementary and Sanger Ridge as far as participating on their field days, but also the snag in school. We also have started a PGA Junior League, which is part of the big PGA initiative, and our, got so big, we had to form our own league. We had to break away from Oklahoma City because Amy Daniel just took off with it, and it's been really, really something to see. We engaged the high school and junior high program in 2010, and we welcomed them back out to Lakeside. This was something that wasn't the case previously, and we also did some sponsorships. We did some fundraisers to better equip the kids, and they went from one of the poorly-equipped schools in the state to probably one of the best. We built upon that program, and we started something in 2013 where all kids play golf for free. So, anybody who's 17 years or younger can come out to the facility. We have clubs through grants, and they can check out clubs like a library book, take out on the golf course and learn. That's the role of a municipal golf course in the community. It's your first entry into a golf. It's for individuals on fixed income, and it's something that I'm really, really passionate about, because golf is seen as an elitist sport. It's seen as, you know, how expensive can it be? How nice can it be? And we've got Carston Creek in our own backyard, which is over $300 for a green fee, $10,000 a year annually to join, and someone like myself would have never had the opportunity to start golf if it wasn't for a municipal golf course. And that's where I grew up. That's how I got started, and it's very, very dear to me. And that's how I stayed on the municipal side and came here in 2010. And so, of everything that we've done, everything I've done at Lakeside, this is, this is what we're proud of, and this is what we've, we've done. So, instead of changing prices, instead of increasing our revenues by running the kids off, looking for more corporate events to come in, this was something that we embraced, and it didn't damage revenues at all. If the course is open, we let kids go out and play, and it's a great place for them to be outside exercising, and a lot of the kids that started in this program six years ago are now working for us, where they're still at the golf course, they're still at OSU, and they're still participating in the game. So, I've got an outstanding staff, and I can't lean on them enough in this aspect of it, but we're really, really proud of this. Our community involvement, obviously, we have a bunch of fundraisers that come through the, through the property, but our, getting, getting our schools involved, that was something that we reached out and did three years ago, where my wife, being an educator, gave us an in to get in and out and make it real seamless to, to get kids to play. You know, females was one of our targeted, I've got a mainly female staff at the golf course, especially the ones that are teaching and playing. And we really were targeting the young girls to get them to come in and get started, because it's such a small demographic of golfer out there nationally. So, that was one thing that, that we really, really have worked for, and it's, and it's starting to pay off. We've got more and more kids using the facility every single year. I wasn't going to get into the financials, because you guys have those in front of you, and I didn't want to bore you any longer than I needed to, but at this point, I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to ask, is there anything else I didn't touch on that you would like to add? Okay. Do you have any questions or anything else of kind of what?
Well, I can tell you, my dad golfs there on a regular basis and believes in the city golf course. I appreciated the report you sent with us. I think the one question I have is I kind of think about ways to have people utilize our course more. How much do you interact with visits Stillwater as far as events and things that bring people into our town to let spouses, relatives, children know that we do have a city golf course that would be available to them while they're here? Is there some sort of partnership? As we talked about partnerships earlier, are there some things that can happen to maybe introduce people to, to our golf course that wouldn't normally know it was there?
We have. We, we've explored it, and when, are you, are you referencing the Visitors' Bureau?
Yes.
Yes. And so, when it was part of the city of Stillwater, obviously, I know we were very, very close, and we, we did a lot of things in conjunction. We didn't get a whole lot of play from it. It wasn't something, everybody that was coming in to visit Stillwater, nowadays it's Google. As they're driving in from wherever they're coming in, they're Googling golf, they're Googling whatever they're wanting to do while they're in here. So, really, our search engine optimization was where we really, really focused. So, anytime you hit anything that says Stillwater Golf, Lakeside Golf Course is at the top. And that was one thing that we're trying to get away from print advertising. We're trying to get away from, it's expensive, it doesn't hit a targeted market, and we really got to focus on who we're trying to get to. Golf Oklahoma is someone that we've really partnered with, and they've given us a lot of press over the last few years, especially with everything that we've done as far as the kids are concerned. And so, you know, with us, the electronic and the internet's really where we focused all of our money, and it's less expensive, and you can just get a bigger, bigger return on investment.
I just wanted to confirm, Michael. You said that you're looking at a $400,000 to $500,000 capital outlay for equipment?
That's for the maintenance equipment. So, the maintenance equipment's going to be anywhere from $300,000 to probably $450,000. The batteries on the golf carts are due for replacement as well. So, we've got two choices. We can either go buy a new fleet, or we can rebatter the entire fleet, and that'll be due in one year. And so, that'll be an additional $75,000 to $80,000 to do as well.
Do you see, do you have other, thank you for the clarification on the equipment outlay and the batteries. Other capital expenses that are looming?
No. The, the facility's in good condition. The greens are good. The, you know, the irrigation system, the pump house, those are your main, main high-dollar expenses, but everything's in good working order. I feel very, very comfortable with the condition that it's in, or I wouldn't be sitting here saying, I'm going to go spend this money to go do it if I didn't, because, but I feel really, really, I'm really confident in our superintendent, you know, and so, like I said, taking care of it for the last six years put us in a unique perspective where we know exactly what we should be on the lookout for. Obviously, there will be unexpected things pop up from time to time, but we've got the big things under control.
Thank you.
So, what do we get in this change, right? Going from what we're doing now to moving to this sort of lease arrangement, what's the big difference for the city?
Long-term stability of your golf program. It's a hands-off program where you guys will have a fixed amount you can budget for over the next five to 10 years, and you can step away from it and not have to worry about if the golf course operates, makes a little bit of money, which, as you've seen from our past six years, it's not, but it's also not going to have some huge number at the end that we're going to be pulling from the general fund to be able to operate. Obviously, when you're dealing with your own money and you've got, you know, I can move faster than the city of Stillwater. I can hire, I can recruit, I can expand, and I can contract a lot faster than a municipal operation can. Being under 50 employees, I'm exempt from the FSLA, Obamacare, and there's some different things private business can go in and do. Right now, we're a hybrid, kind of straddled the fence. What is the purpose of the golf course? What are we here for, and what do we do? Well, you know, some people say it should be, you know, an enterprise fund, cover its own money, cover its own self. While the other half, someone says, well, what we're doing with the kids, that's great. We're happy, you know, it adds to the quality of life in the city of Stillwater. And so, really, that's the big question, is what is the golf course and what is its purpose? And if the purpose is for it to be self-sustaining, to be kind of where we can plan in advance and say it's only going to cost X amount of dollars for the next five years with no surprises, and we're willing to cover the loss, then that's the benefit to the city of Stillwater, plus you get me, for the next five years. And, and, and with us taking it over, the transition's going to be seamless, because we have employees already in place. We have everything set. There really isn't that much that we would go out and change. Obviously, we would operate a little bit differently. The city of Stillwater hiring freeze that we're on right now is a perfect example. We got to get gearing up for the spring, and I've got three people in the maintenance department. We require 15, seasonals and full times and everything else, and so, it, it takes us away from that, where we can go out and operate like a true business and, you know, do things that's in the best interest of the property. You know, instead of outlaying a half million dollars in cash, you know, we would go in and we would take on a lease, an operating lease on, on the equipment, be under warranty. So, right now, I think we're, we paid 70, Mike, are you here? What did we pay in repair bills last year for the equipment? 50? That's the cost of a new, new lease on equipment. And so, what we can offer you is stability. We can keep things the way we're going right now. We're not going to come in and hike prices. We're not going to run kids off. We're not going to run anybody else off. It would just continue to move as it has over the last six years, and hopefully make it easier when budgets come due, to be able to not have a question mark at the end of the year, what's the golf course going to, going to cost the city when not every citizen utilizes it?
Thanks.
Any other questions?
What if you make a whole bunch of money?
Well, I don't know what, that's a good question, you know, so, it's, it's not going to happen, because unless something happens with the demographic of the city, we have a huge population increase. It's pretty, you have to have a fluent population to make these operations go, which we don't have. We don't have a large affluent population here in the city of Stillwater. And so, there's, coming from the city of Dallas, it was a little bit different, where we had so many people to, you know, to fish, fish from. Here, it's a very, it's a unique golf course, and where the golf course is at, about that $100,000 in revenue is, it's going to stay flat. There's really not much else we can, we can, we can do with that. We can start bringing more corporate events and really selling golf tournaments and really, really pushing, 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 but what that does is it closes the golf course down for the, for our senior population that play every day. And so, it's a very fine line between where we're going to go get the money and how, how much money can the facility generate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next up is Orion Management.
Thank you, John. I have, Kate's going to hand out some stuff to you that we'll go over. Okay, thank you. My name is Shane Gardner, and I'm a partner with Orion Management Solutions, Orion Golf. I've got two of our corporate directors here in the room with us. Tony Burdles is our corporate agronomist, so he handles all of our agronomy for our golf courses. And Caitlin Trosky is our Director of Marketing, and she handles all of the marketing for our golf courses as well. So, who is Orion Management? We have two partners with over 40 years of, of experience in the golf industry. It's the only thing that we do. We're one-trick ponies. We don't know how to do anything else other than manage golf facilities. Our Director of Agronomy has over 30 years of experience in both cool season and warm season grasses. We have a Director of Marketing, Caitlin, who not only has a background in marketing, but a background in creative design, and she played collegiate golf. So, she knows the golf side of things and the marketing side of things. And we have a Director of Food and Beverage with over 20 years of experience to help us with that area. As far as municipal experience goes, we have over seven golf courses that are municipalities. Some are large and some are small. Our, our largest one, we recently acquired- So we understand the dynamic between golf and the college as well. When you look at the municipal experience, Adams Point Golf Club is city of Blue Springs. It does about 1.5 to 1.6 million in revenue. Indian Creek, as I mentioned earlier, is in Carrollton, does about $4 million in revenue. Iron Horse does about two. Swolpe Memorial is probably very similar to Lakeside in that it's an old historic golf course. Minor Park is more of a moderate fee golf course, very flat and appeals to a very broad audience. Heart of America is the recent Tom Watson Golf Academy. So there's a lot of instruction that goes on there. We're partners with the first tee of greater Kansas City. And then Sycamore Ridge and Shawnee Bend are both also facilities that we took over that were municipal facilities. So Oklahoma and Lakeside, we've played some of the golf courses here, so we understand the competition that Lakeside goes against. The Lakeside, we've been here several times, looked around, been on the property, had a nice visit today with Amy and Mike as well. And we're updated regularly on the progress of Lakeside. So with people in the area that we know, we follow the golf course and what it's trending. The people that you see with us, when we go into a golf course, we retain about 90% of the people, 90 to 95% of the people. So I think in the proposal that you got from us, all of those people become our employees and at all the facilities that we've taken over, we retain those people and it's our goal to kind of keep those people and keep them in our company. So our goals are to hire good people and have those people stay with our company. All decisions that we make are in the best interest of the facility. So if you're going around to different facilities and you see a company or a golf course that's managed by a certain company, you may see their name attached with it. Our focus isn't really our name, our focus is the golf course. And if we do a good job, we know that people will ask about us as well. And then we try and provide more personal attention with Kate, with Tony, with myself and with Matt. We provide for people that can be here, help out in several different ways and several different capacities. So some of our success, we followed several of the large management companies. We followed Kemper Sports, which I believe has around 80 facilities. We followed Eagle or Arcus, which is out of Dallas, improved customer service, course conditions and financial performance. We've took over a golf course from Billy Casper and had a $240,000 operating debt and we erased that and moved the facility to a net profit. We've also eliminated operating losses at two facilities and made them break even. Facilities that were challenged, much in the way that Lakeside is, tried to offer some different programs, offer some different management strategies that would allow that golf course to break even so that it didn't become a burden to the taxpayers. Okay. So what would Orion do differently? How would Orion push revenue and watch expenses? I think you saw in the proposal that we gave, the revenues all come to the city, the expenses are funded and we're on the hook for X amount of dollars per month via an approved budget. So a budget is approved, we get that amount of money to operate for the month, we can't spend any more than that. It's the same model that the city of Kansas City, Missouri uses. Third question, is the company going to be a good steward of your asset? Are we going to manage the facility so that the city of Stillwater looks good? And then course conditions are always a priority. You're taking care of an asset, so you don't want to let things deteriorate. And then obviously, everybody recognizes that the performance of the company that you hire is going to be a reflection of the city. So how do we do that? How do we start with that? I think one of the things that you got is a written business plan. We start with a plan that's put together by our staff and the course staff. There are several different areas. If you look through that, you have a daily fees section, you have a season in review, you have a survey of competition. What are the people and the golf courses in your area doing? You have a special section on marketing, a special section on tournament operations, league play, merchandise, food and beverage and course maintenance. This is done so that you all know what's going on at the golf course before it happens. So the goal for us with all the cities that we operate facilities for is that this is given to them, they look it over, they see where it's going and then they approve it. This is kind of one of those things that we give our people and we ask them to keep with them because it's a roadmap to where we're going. If there's any deviation from this, then that's something that you all know about before it happens. So as it happens with cities, the one thing that nobody likes is a surprise. So we try and make sure that that doesn't happen. In there, you'll find different corporate tournament packages. We work on building leagues, which a lot of time means that we have to form the league. We have to organize the league, we have to set it up. A lot of people will go to parties, but they don't want to organize the party. And so that has to happen from a staff level. Building men's and ladies golf associations. One thing I didn't put down here was at several of our facilities, we try and build couples golf so that you're getting people out together. I know that that's an important aspect of the growth of golf today. Increasing food and beverage revenue. You want to look at your food and beverage department that you have and say, okay, what can we do to increase the revenue in this area? There's no way that your food and beverage should ever lose you money. It's an amenity and it's a profit center for the golf course. And then one thing that's changed since I got into the golf business is that now you leave the property to market the facility. When I first got into golf, you could open the doors and people would just come. And it's not like that anymore. You have to reach out to people, you have to organize things, you can't just stay at the facility, you have to go to them. And that has changed. So how do you seek out other forms of revenue? Obviously, the golf course has lessons, has camps, clinics and training. I know Mr. Henderson mentioned the SNAG. Starting new at golf is the acronym for SNAG. We're pretty heavily into that as well and we provide SNAG to schools as well and go into the schools, the elementary schools with our golf professionals to help the PE teachers teach golf. And the reason we do that is because not everybody is fast and not everybody's tall. So golf, you know, is one of those games where it doesn't matter how tall you are or how fast you are, it applies to a different segment of people. So it gives them something else. And obviously, we do that in the offseason, in the winter, because when they come out of winter and into spring, there's soccer, there's baseball, there's softball, but there's also the option for golf as well. We look at exploring booking non-golf events. Are there events that you can host that are non-golf events that will help boost your revenue? Offseason themed golf events, whether it's a three-person scramble, four-person scramble, maybe it's a couples event, but it's something around kind of a holiday or something in the offseason that you can get people to come out for. And then partnering with corporations to provide logo merchandise. With a number of our national accounts that we get pricing with, we go out to different corporations and ask them, are there things that we can provide for you that we can get you at a better price than you could go out and get yourself? Monthly reporting of financials with the facility report, I think one of those was also in your packet. It shows you kind of where the revenues are, where the expenses are. It gives you an explanation if something's over. It gives you an explanation if something's under. You know, you might look at a report and it might say, okay, well, our expenses are under and that might just be a timing issue. So if that's identified on the report, someone that looks at that can then say, while they're under, we know that that expense is coming. The other page on that has to do with events that are booked, how many players, what day they're on, what time they're starting, all of those details so that if you're getting that on a monthly basis, you can see where the golf course stands. Personal meetings, or I'm sorry, communication with email and phone. Obviously, with today's technology, you're always in constant communication with the people that you work with. Personal meetings with partners and directors. For Matt, myself, for Tony, for Kate, we're involved with all of our properties. It's what we do. So you'll see us because we're the same team that you'll see here when we visit. Copies of course audits. We do an audit of the golf course. We look at what's performing well, what's not performing well, what needs to be fixed, what doesn't need to be fixed, and we provide that information to our owners so that they know where the facility stands. And then copies of all course marketing materials. You know, we don't want you to hear of something before or after it goes out. We want you to be aware of what's, what's being advertised, how it's being marketed and who it's being marketed to. I know a lot of our owners, they look at it and say, okay, if you're going to spend this much money on advertising or marketing, who are you targeting? What's the purpose? What's the goal and how are we going to track it? Because that's the only way that you can tell whether your marketing's effective. And then, as the last bullet reads, no surprises. We talked about that earlier because we want to make sure that we're doing things and that you're aware of them. Capital improvements. I know that that's been one of the things that's come up tonight. We're aware of the equipment situation. Several golf courses, several municipalities are in similar situations with course equipment. I think what we've found is that you try and stretch out some of those acquisitions over leases and you try and spread that cost out if you can so that you're not hit with it all at once. But I think one of the most important aspects of capital improvements that you would require from someone that operates your golf course would be, is the money spent on a capital improvement going to create a new revenue stream? Is there something that we can spend money on that then allows us to create a new revenue stream? Can that money spent on capital improvements cut back on operating expenses? Is there something that we're going to spend money on that then we can save from an operating standpoint? Should money be spent on capital improvements to cut back on operating payroll? Are there things that you can do to combine positions? And then obviously, the last point, what equipment needs to be replaced and what can be repaired? And I know you've been doing that for a while, but those are always questions that we ask. And when we work for our owners, we go in there with that mindset before we, before we do anything. So from a year-end review, at the end of the year, we kind of go through a process with our people and with our staff, what worked well? What, what did we attract? Was that our, who did we attract? Was that our goal and did we meet our goals? Because those are things that you need to know when you're putting together your business plan for the next year. Course conditions, what improved, what needs work and what is needed for next year so that, again, you can set that plan up for the following year. And then what are our competitors doing? You're constantly looking at your competitors because they're always changing in some way, shape or form. And then how did we do financially? Where did we exceed and where did we fall short? And then you build a plan for next year with a SWOT analysis, which stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And every business does that. Every business goes through and says, what are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? What are our opportunities and what do we need to be worried about? So that's an important part of what we do. Why choose us? We try and build community ties as well. I think becoming part of the, of the community and through organizations and participating in things, I think helps create ties that then can help the golf course in the long run. Teaching at the school level, as I said before, you can't wait for people to come out to you. We actually send our golf professionals into the schools to help the PE teachers so that they know how to teach golf, so that then they can come out, the students can come out, whether they're first graders, third graders, sixth graders, come out and then participate in the junior golf programs. Attending city-sponsored events, if the city has an event, that's a big event, I think it's important that the, the course personnel are there, especially the high-profile course personnel. And then offering free clinics. You might look at it and say, okay, well, you're giving something away, but you're really not. When you're offering a free clinic to somebody, you're just giving them 10 or 15 minutes of your time to kind of help them understand some aspect of their game and then they'll come back later on. We understand municipalities. We work with six or seven of them right now. They're all different. I think developing a written business plan gives them comfort in knowing what's going to happen. We look into the future and we try and plan ahead. So we're not looking at today, we're kind of looking at what's going to happen over the next six months and what's going to happen over the next year. I think one thing that we've seen a huge uptick on at the courses that we manage is the ability of people to book on their mobile phone and book through the web. And if you go to any one of our golf courses, you'll see that our tee times are online. We post specials, we don't do it through a third party and by doing that, you get 100% of that revenue. In addition to that, we have an online store that will offer packages, whether that be for Father's Day, Valentine's Day, Mother's Day, things like that, so that, that way people can buy those things from the convenience of their own homes and then come back and redeem them at the golf course. No surprises, as I mentioned that earlier, and then obviously, we're a reflection of the city. If you choose to go with us, we know that we represent you and that's important to us. Stability. From our standpoint, I would tell you that probably 75 to 80% of the key people that work with us have been with us for over five to seven years. And the people that work with us know that if they're in a position where they're trying to advance, they know that we're looking out for their best interests. And by doing that, then they know, they can relax and just give the best to the customers. We're not going public, we're not a big company, so our top people don't move around and we don't change direction. We have municipal experience, several different facilities and several different kind of levels. And that's it. I'd love to take any questions or comments that you might have.
Okay. Counselors. I'm really, thank you for being here. And I was interested in the contingency management incentive and, and I think, well, three things. The difference in the monthly fee, basic management fee, a big difference between 10,000, what was it, 10,000 and 4,000, 4750, the contingency management incentive. And I'm assuming that that is because of the city maintaining the responsibility for the capital.
That's exactly right. For 95% of the golf courses that we manage for cities, it's their asset, they want to retain that asset and they want somebody to manage that asset for them, but there also is an incentive for that company because if we can get and push revenues up to a certain point, then that makes everything, that makes everybody whole, which is, which is what the goal was. When we started at the two facilities that were barely break even or that were losing money, our goal was to get them to a break even. We tried several different things. At two different facilities, we tried two different things to get them to that point. In some ways, it was cutting expenses, in some ways, it was driving revenues and in some ways, it was a combination of both. And in another facility, it was opening up the facility to a whole new revenue stream and that whole new revenue stream pushed it right over the edge to the point where it was losing and then it became a break even. So I think it's, you look at golf courses like a puzzle and you say to yourself, okay, what pieces of the puzzle do we need to put in here to make this, to make this work?
I mean, I have the same question that I asked before, which is, you know, how is a proposal like this different than us just hiring somebody and paying a salary to somebody to run the golf course for us? I mean, what is the difference for me to have to pay a management fee and go through this process than just having a guy who works for the city run the golf course?
Well, I think Mr. Henderson is right. I mean, private enterprise usually operates quicker, faster, easier than a government entity and I know that we took over two golf courses for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, and all of those people were our employees. And we took over one golf course for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, and they wanted their maintenance employees to stay employed by the city. And within 12 months, they asked us to take over the entire operation. And just from a cost standpoint, it was easier for us to hire and train and do things than it was for the city to do that.
I mean, I have the same question that I asked before, which is, you know, how is a proposal like this different than us just hiring somebody and paying a salary to somebody to run the golf course for us? I mean, what is the difference for me to have to pay a management fee and go through this process than just having a guy who works for the city run the golf course?
Well, I think Mr. Henderson is right. I mean, private enterprise usually operates quicker, faster, easier than a government entity, and I know that we took over two golf courses for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, and all of those people were our employees. And we took over one golf course for the city of Kansas City, Missouri, and they wanted their maintenance employees to stay employed by the city. And within 12 months, they asked us to take over the entire operation. And just from a cost standpoint, it was easier for us to hire and train and do things than it was for the city to do that. Plus, when you're looking at seasonal business like golf, and I know the season's longer here, but it is still somewhat of a seasonal business, you could have employees working a fair number of hours, and then all of a sudden, on a Saturday, you've got a rainstorm and you have a big tournament. You have to, you have to make sure that the golf course is ready to go. And I know from the experience that we had in Kansas City, it was very difficult for the city to do that because those people were timed out and they were, you know, taking the off time where, you know, we kind of pitch in and help out in a number of different ways.
Any other questions?
I did notice that most of your courses are Kansas and...
Missouri.
Missouri.
And then Texas, yes.
Texas. So I guess Oklahoma would be in the middle.
We've got that gap right there.
Yeah.
Ironic, isn't it?
It's easy to fly here, too.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, well, you know, for us, it's a four-hour drive. We, you know, I live in the southern part of Kansas City, in Overland Park, and we hop on 35 and we're here. So I've been here several times, been here with my son to play golf. You know, it's kind of one of those things where you just get in a car and go. So it's a very easy, I'm from Nebraska, so don't hold that against me, but I go north three hours the same way, and I'm, you know, there, I go south four hours and I'm here, so.
So you would be a familiar face in Stillwater.
Yes. I think with all four of our people, you would see us on a regular basis. And again, you know, it's not my intention to, our intention at every facility that we've gone to is we've hired the people that were there. The only time we didn't hire the people that were there was when somebody said, hey, we want you to do something different in this position. We just think it's time for a change. But otherwise, we hire those people, we try and work with those people, and we try and train those people. And, you know, we've got several people that are moving their way through the PGA of America and moving their way through the Golf Course Superintendent's Association of America, and they're looking for other opportunities. They're saying to themselves, okay, if I do a good job, can I have an opportunity at this place? Can I have an opportunity when this place opens? And so that's really kind of our growth strategy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
As I said at the beginning, we didn't intend that the council needed to make a decision tonight. This is a fairly substantial change potentially to how we've operated the golf course, and we wanted you to have time to digest the proposals, digest the information you've heard tonight, and we can bring this back at a future council meeting to move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
It was great.
There is a lot of information here today.
There is. I think I need to take up golf.
When you came to visit, did you play in Pawnee?
No, I'm sorry.
When you came to visit and play at other courses, did you play in Pawnee?
I did not.
Oh, well.
I played one right across the street.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so how long do we have before this comes back?
We can bring it back as early as the first meeting in February, if you'd like to.
And you were, do you need us to tell you to move forward on this? Do we need to take a vote for that?
No.
I think at that time, you could tell us any of the things that we've already discussed as options or anything else that you would like to consider as an option. If you would like to start negotiations with one of these two companies, then we could do that at that time between now and then. Think about what you've heard and what you want to do.
Okay, does the first meeting in February stand reasonable to everybody? Yes?
If I may, Mayor, and I probably should have said this before the presentation's even started, but I've had several citizens ask, well, why are you considering this? Well, in the budget situation we're in, in the revenue situation that we're in, the golf course has been left wanting in terms of capital investment, not on the course but of the equipment, because there are other things that not only city staff, but the council felt were priorities for the expenditure of those funds. And it's certainly a shame that some of that equipment has been out there as long as it has, and it is in poor shape, and it's a testament to the folks that work for Mike that it's still running because, you know, it's the old southern bubble gum and baylin' wire in some cases, and some of that equipment you can't get parts for. So we're looking at a way to protect the city's investment in that course and still be able to provide a good experience for the citizens, and we don't think we're doing a great job of that.
Okay. We have a lot of studying to do.
We, the city, want to make it clear.
Yes, yes.
In terms of investing what we should invest.
All right, thank you.
Hey, I actually have, if I may, sorry, it's new city council tonight, so I'm still kind of feeling my way here, but how does, how does the council go about negotiating from here on out with either company? How does that work? Who negotiates? How is that done?
Well, go ahead. Staff can handle the negotiations. You can give us general direction about what you'd like to see. You could pick one of the two companies that you heard from tonight and direct us to negotiate with them. It doesn't necessarily have to go along the lines of what was in the proposal. The RFP was left very wide open so that we could work with either company to come up with a plan that works for everybody.
Okay. Okay, we will be thinking and studying, and we'll be back with you in early February.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item D, development agreement between the city of Stillwater and the Wesley Foundation for property located at 823 West University, CC-17-07.
Paula Denison will be making that report tonight.
Good evening. Give me just a moment, and I will pull this up. I will be very brief for you this evening. We have, as you recall, Form-Based Code area. Within that area, all development agreements we're bringing before the city council. Well, this tonight is for the Wesley Foundation, and there are representatives for the Wesley Foundation present in the audience in case you do have questions that I am unable to answer. What you can see is just a visual rendering of how their new building will look. If we've been by there lately, there is no building, so they've already done a portion of it. This is the visual rendering. This is actually looking southeast from the corner of University and Washington Streets. Again, this proposal is appropriate for the Form-Based Code area, and along with the development agreement, the public realm improvement that the Wesley Foundation is obligated to, they are putting up a performance bond and also payment in lieu of construction for some of the parking, and I'll show you that in just a moment. Outlined in black is the Google Earth view of the property. Overlaying is the T6, which is the transect six area. It replaced our standard zoning when we adopted Form-Based Codes. To the west is residential multifamily, commercial business. University, of course, is to the north, and the reason all of this T6 area is hatched is because it has the 75-foot height limitation to still have a view of campus for a couple of blocks immediately around. Site plan for the area, the view that we were looking at on the beautiful picture was standing about at the University and Washington location, again, looking to the southwest. So this is the front of the facility. You can see that parking is going to be to the south and the east. I will note, and it is included in the development agreement that was in your packets, that there are two phases to this proposal. Phase two is this small square right down here in the very southeast corner, and that is contingent on some land swapping that will occur after May of 2017. So the development agreement does make provision for that in that, just in case that land swap does not occur, there are other alternatives that the Wesley Foundation can put in that required parking for their property. And all of that is covered in the development agreement and has been reviewed by staff, and everyone is okay with it. They do have the obligation to the Washington Street, and as part of this street profile, you will see this center of the street parking. It's one of the unique things that we have on some of the streets in the Form-Based Code area. If, if looking, if where the trees and the car diagram is University and this is Washington, the Wesley Foundation would be over here in this area, you can barely see my little mouse, in this area. So their payment in lieu of construction, right now, the center of the street parking, as we did with Avid Square at Fourth and Hester, we are accepting payment for their portion of that center of the street parking because it's not going to go in during all of the construction activity that is occurring in that area. So the city finance department has got an account already for me, depending on what the council does this evening with the development agreement. Once again, there's that gorgeous picture of the Wesley Foundation building that is proposed, and your alternatives are in your report, approve as prepared, approve with any specified changes, or take no action. I will caution that taking no action means that the Wesley Foundation will be obligated to put in all of the public realm improvements and those be accepted by staff and council prior to a building permit being issued. The development agreement allows the building permit to be issued before all of those outside of the building footprint items are completed. Any questions?
Counselors.
How is the payment in lieu of construction calculated at this point? And what happens if construction, when it happens, is more expensive than what we thought it was today?
It is calculated by the engineer of record who has done the design for compliance with what we have on the books. Also, I will note that they are paying for half-street. They're not covering the entire length, depth of those parking stalls, just half. So at this time, I can say that unless across the street comes in with the development in the Form-Based Code area, it will be a while before that parking in the center of the street is implemented. Cost more than likely will go up. We have a very good estimate that has been verified by staff, but we have not added any additional contingencies or anything into it.
Okay, so if they go ahead and pay their portion now, build their building, it's five years before we do construction there, and their half of it is 30% more than what they paid in at this point, we just eat the 30%?
We do, or there are other funding options that are available as a whole, not to individual property owner-specific. Assessment districts.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought you were referring to.
Any other financing districts or opportunities.
Okay, thanks.
I don't know if this is, if you can answer this or if it's even relevant, but I'm just curious, what the percent of the improvements, streetscape, et cetera, what percent that is of the total cost of the project?
I do not have the total cost of the project. As I said, their representatives are here this evening, and if they would like to respond, because I cannot. They haven't filed all of their paperwork yet with the office upstairs, so we don't have a valuation or an estimate of the total building cost, parking lots, anything like that at this point. Anything else for me?
Is the, is the new AGR house that's just to the south of this, right on the other side of the street?
Correct.
Is it?
Across Washington.
Is it, was it built in the Form-Based Code?
Prior to the city's adoption. Correct, yes.
So no one's ever going to pay for their half of the center part, center street parking?
Never is a long time.
Well, they're not obligated.
[laughter]
They're not obligated at this point to pay for half the street being redone.
That is correct.
Okay.
Counselors.
Maybe we'll ask them nicely.
Discussion.
This Form-Based Code funding issue is really a problem at this point. Like, it is a real problem. Because I'm just looking at this, and the payment in lieu of construction is $8,000. I mean, five years from now, it could cost eight, you know, it could cost $20,000 for that to get done, and I don't, I mean, I just think we're setting ourselves up to be in real trouble since especially, you know, I mean, some of the stuff that was redeveloped beforehand, we're not going to get payment on that other half of the street. We've got to figure out a better way to fund these improvements that we're making these people make because it's not working.
If I may, Mayor, Councilor Joyce, we currently have in study, in process, an engineering study for that entire area that will give us a linear foot estimate of what those costs would be and would compare that cost to just plain old sidewalk and plain old street, if you will, and what that cost differential is, and then we will discuss with you, once we have those figures, possible methods of financing those kinds of projects.
Which is great. My question, I guess, would be with, like, an agreement like this, if we enter into it and then we decide to come up with a new sort of funding mechanism, what happens? Do we go back and give them their money?
You could amend the development agreement if we find a way that probably is preferential to what is in the development agreement. Because in most of these instances, they have to fund this at some point, but if we come up with a way to collectively fund this, then most people are more than anxious to participate.
The idea would be there would be better funding mechanism than what they're being asked to at this point.
Yes, I hope, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think this looks great. It looks awesome. It'd be a great addition down there.
Much needed.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the development agreement between the city of Stillwater and the Wesley Foundation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-17-07. That takes us to item E, proposed audit standards for third-party facilities program agreements, CC-17-10.
This is an item that the council was interested in having and was included in the strategic plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that towards the end of the meeting, but we do have a proposed plan, and our CFO, Melissa Reams, will provide that report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Boy, you guys have tackled a lot of serious topics, and I'm coming right at you with audit-type things, so.
We were off a month.
[laughter]
Let's see here.
Your initiation.
Yeah.
We're only one-fourth done.
Okay, so tonight, we're going to talk about service-level agreements and what type of assurance that you as councilors and our citizens can have, that the monies that we have invested or have given in those service-level agreements, have the goals really been met by those organizations? And you actually heard from one of the organizations this evening, so I thought that was a really nice transition into our discussion this evening. What is a service-level agreement? It is strictly an agreement between, can either be an internal or external user, end-user, and it outlines what is expected from that arrangement between those two parties and what is the cost going to be. And again, it's a very output, output-based type agreement, you know? How many people are we going to serve? What kind of return are we going to get? Those types of things. Currently, the city has, we're looking at seven of these agreements, and these are the entities that we have contracted with to provide those particular services. And you heard from Mr. Smolin this evening about the Friends of the Multi-Art Center. They are, the agreement that we have with them is to manage that facility for us. I believe we heard from the Friends, or Lake McMurtry Friends back in December, Payne County Youth Services, Stillwater Area Sports Association, and we've heard from them recently as well back in November, Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, Stillwater Museum Association, and Red Dirt DMO. and Red Dirt DMO. The initial charge to the finance department was to develop audit procedures. And so I wanted to take just a quick moment and review with you the difference between an audit, a review, and a compilation. We use the term audit, I think, in a very broad sense, in a lot of respects, and I want to make sure that you all clearly understand what's required and what the cost is with those, those types of services, those level of services. So we start out with an audit. It is the most expensive product that you can engage an accounting firm for, but it also provides you the highest level of assurance. They are going to go through and make sure that what is represented on those financial statements has no material misstatement. They're also looking at internal controls, they're doing a lot of testing, they're really trying to make sure that what you see on that financial statement is an accurate representation of what's going on with that business. And it really serves as confirmation to outside parties. With our particular organization, we have an outside audit, and one of the first people to tap into that is our bonding people, the people that we've sold the bonds to. They are wanting to make sure that we have not misrepresented who we are and what our financial status is. The next level of assurance that you can engage a CPA firm for is a review. And again, a review is a very limited base of inquiry. It equates to, or I equate it to, in my mind, the single audit with federal government grants. They are asking those firms, the federal government is coming in and asking those firms to come in and give them some assurance that the grant money or the federal money that has come our way has been used for the purpose it was intended. So that's what a review is. And then lastly, the least expensive is compilation. And I can tell you that all seven of our service-level providers do engage local CPA firms to provide compilation services to them on a monthly basis. And essentially, it's balancing the checkbook, making sure that everything was accounted for and put into a category, and they may actually generate a set of financial statements. They may or may not be according to generally accepted accounting principles. So those are the levels of service that we could engage. I gave you a summary, and I know for our audience, this doesn't translate well to the overhead screen, but I gave you a summary of those seven agreements, what their agreement periods are, and I thought it was fortuitous that we were looking at this, just as six of those are due to expire in June. So we will be looking at renegotiating those agreements. What their direct funding is, and by direct funding, that means that the city writes a check to these organizations to provide the services agreed upon. There is also other compensation included with these agreements, generally in the form of utilities. And we'll look, I gave you an attachment for that as well, kind of a high-level overview of what did the agreement consist of? What were we expecting to get for the monies and the indirect support that we sent their way? And, and then lastly, what my recommendation would have been, and what the finance department's recommendation would have been for an audit procedure along with these. Here's that indirect, indirect funding attachment. Multi-Arts receives funding in the form of utilities and then retained revenue. Friends of Lake McMurtry, again, utilities and retained revenue. SASSA, utilities, office space, and retained revenue. And then Red Dirt DMO, in addition to what we pay, the fee that we pay them, there are some additional grants that we underwrite and payment for advertising.
Those numbers are in addition to the?
Yes. These are what I call indirect funding sources. The utilities, the city just underwrites that, that, it's not like we get a bill for each one of those entities. Alternatives. You may decide to require any level of assurance from these service providers that you feel comfortable with. Probably as we start retooling or renegotiating these contracts, we certainly want to leave ourselves the ability to come in under any circumstance, and generally, it's circumstances that give us concern, and require that full-blown audit at their expense. I do think, and this is my recommendation, I do think that the nature of the agreements that we have right now, with the exception of probably three or four of them, I think staff, if we tailor those agreements to where they are very specific as to what our direct funding is going to support, staff can confirm that on a quarterly basis. Also would like to set up, I'm going to jump forward here. I was playing with this this morning. And it's a service-level agreement, again, giving us contact information, but I want to hear from those organizations. What is your, what is your proposal? What is your mission statement for your organization? Mr. Smolin gave you the mission statement of the Multi-Arts. And how does that tie back to the services that you provide, and what, how is that a benefit to the city? Performance measures. You all, as a council, came in back in, gosh, September, October, really worked closely with the chamber and developed those benchmark measures, and they are to be reporting to you quarterly about how they are doing in obtaining the goals that were set forth. This would not be any different than that. Reporting and funding timelines. Is this a lump-sum payment? Do you need it by July 1st, or you're not going to be able to pay your bills? Can it be paid quarterly? How often are we going to require that they report to us, and what type of format? And then finally, I'd like to see a budget. It doesn't have to be a real formal budget, but especially, I would like to see how they intend to spend the money that the city is, is fronting them. So just pretty basic, similar to a grant application, really. Go ahead.
Quick question. So what are their reporting requirements right now? What are we getting from the, as a city, from these providers? Anything right now?
Pretty much, Councilor Wedlake, what you saw this evening from the Friends of the Multi-Arts. Mr. McLennie organizes that for us with these seven entities, and he's really worked on a standardized format, if you will, so that you're seeing the same types of things from them.
And that's standardized just for, just for the Multi-Arts?
No, it, it's, it's a standardized format across all seven of these entities.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are they, and how often are we getting quarterly reports?
Um, it, it depends on the agreement, and probably the size of the funding, would be my guess. Chamber of Commerce is going to report to you quarterly. They have benchmark goals that they are charged with, and they, they have been doing that. I believe Red Dirt DMO reports quarterly. I don't know that they formally come here in front of the council, but they are remitting written reports to staff for review. So it just kind of depends.
Okay. So nothing was, nothing was really standardized at the time that these contracts were put in place?
That is correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah, or that's my understanding, because I wasn't here when they were put in place. So. Questions?
So you would like us to take a vote tonight on your recommendation?
Recommendation, and, and kind of give me direction, and then Mr. Dorman and I are going to start down this pathway with these folks.
Well, I would like to say that I like that we're doing this, and it just makes everybody be able to understand where the money is going.
It really does.
And in an easy way to understand it. So as we first started with the contracts, now we understand more of what we need. I know that we're changing, and just like when we asked the chamber to do something a little bit different this time, I really liked what the chamber did and the report, and I hope that we can do more of those kinds of things with, with all of our agreements.
Absolutely. I, I think evaluation of the agreements are key, and both of the presenters this evening in regards to the golf course addressed that. And, and, and just in general, I don't think we, as governing bodies, do a really good job of coming back and doing an evaluation step. It's probably one of the most important things you do.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
By standardizing it, too, it makes it simple for, you know, for us to understand what's going on and see it clearly.
Right, right.
So with that, counselors, do we have a motion?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Can I answer?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. On this, the service-level agreement thing that you put at the end there, is that something you, you're proposing for?
It is an initial draft, and it is certainly open to, yes.
But for, like, somebody new we're going to do one of these with, or for our existing?
Any of these contracts that are coming up for renewal in June, to me, that seems like the timeframe, but certainly, if you had concerns, we could, we could escalate.
So is that within the recommendation that we're going to vote on in a second, that we do this?
I guess it's, yes. It's inherent within it, yes.
Because, yes, I think that's a great idea. You said earlier that you think all seven of the, of the organizations have outside accounting?
They have, yes, compilation services. I actually called and visited with all the contacts for these organizations. You have two that do have outside audits performed, because there are other entities relying on that information. With those, it's the chamber and the Payne County Youth Services. We can rely on those audits, and I think in conjunction with the performance measures that you have set up at the chamber, we can do something similar with Payne County. I think that one's a pretty easy thing to do with them, and then I think we'll have a very good level of assurance there. The others, it just depends on the level of funding and how active they are, and what they're involved in.
As I say, because the Multi-Arts indicated that they have a student doing their accounting for them.
It's my understanding that as of January 1, one of our local CPA firms was going to take over their compilation services. They've had some changes in staffing over the last few months, and, and so they've probably been getting by with what they could find.
Would it be reasonable or unreasonable to, to require in these agreements that the organization have an outside accountant, at least?
I, I don't think that that is unreasonable. If they're having compilation done, and having been that person, and sat there and done the, the, the compilation services, you get, you get a certain level of professional expertise when you're looking at what was paid for, where it's classified, that kind of thing, making sure that if there's capital-type assets, if they need to be treated in a different manner, you are going to get some of that through the compilation process.
Okay. I mean, I, I would, those are, I like the idea that if they're getting other audits done, or they have other financial reports that they have to provide to granting institutions or anything like that, that we should get those as well?
Yes.
They should just submit those to us for review. I would like to require that they have an outside accountant of some kind that's compiling their financials on a monthly basis or on a quarterly basis. And then this renewal contract thing where we're saying, okay, give us some more in information about what you're doing with this money, and give us some guidelines and some goals that we can check against, those, those, I think, would all, I mean, I just want to make sure that's covered in what you're recommending.
That is exactly where I'm going with all of this, absolutely.
I think it makes so much sense, because when you require things like that, then it's actually measurable, and that's what we're trying to do.
And it really is. And in today's governmental environment, and with the efforts and the pushes to be transparent, you have to have these performance measures, and you have to see how many people and goals are being met and served with the money.
And it's got to help them, too.
Sure.
Absolutely.
You know, they understand the way that they're running things, that it meets the goals of what was intended, that's clear for them, too, so.
Very good. So with that discussion, is there a recommendation on CC-17-10?
Yes.
There was a motion.
Motion.
Motion was on the floor, but we haven't had a second.
I'm happy to second that one.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to take staff recommendations and approve CC-17-10. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, CC-17-10 is approved.
Thank you so much, and you will see those agreements coming back in the next few months.
Okay, thank you. All right, item.
I have one question. Melissa, is, this is obviously a PowerPoint.
Yes.
Could you send it to me? Because my eyeballs just cannot read this.
Yes, after the end, you should have gotten the supporting schedules in your packet that pull up, but I can't see the PowerPoint as well.
The PowerPoint would be great. Thank you very much.
I think we would all like the PowerPoint, so. I, I just hear them, I can hear the mumbles up here, so I'll just ask everybody. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, item F. Mr. McNichol, Fiscal 2017 Revised Pavement Management Program, CC-17-08.
Interim Transportation Manager Charlotte Levin will be presenting that report. And this, I might mention, this report is necessitated by the action that the council took December the 5th, when we amended current fiscal year's budget.
Yes, good evening. I would like to give a quick overview of the pavement management program for Dr. Wedlake, and Councilor Wedlake, and so I just have a few slides to go over that. I don't want to overwhelm you with details, since most of you can read up on this, too, and you've seen it before. So we have 442 pavement lane miles in the City of Stillwater, asphalt and concrete, and this is pretty much the asset management program for that. We do several layers of levels of asset management with the pavement, whether it's asphalt or concrete. Preventative maintenance, you can seal off the cracks, you can do thin-service overlays or crack sealing, and that's a picture of thin-service overlay, so you're trying to prevent the water from getting down into the asphalt. And sometimes you do that on concrete as well, to cap it off. Then you have rehabilitation, that's when you mill it, especially if it's asphalt, you mill it a little bit, sometimes there's concrete mixed in, but you do maybe two inches milling, and then you go in with a new layer, so that it's an easier, better ride. And that extends the life of that pavement, that asset. Reconstruction replacement is when you have more thorough deterioration of the asset, and you want to go in and replace a whole section, whether that is asphalt or concrete, you go down to the soil, and then you build up from there. And then we have spot repairs, and that's also called deferred maintenance, when you cannot do the whole street, but you have little sections of it that you do, and then you defer the rest of the street for later. And this is what we've been able to touch with the pavement management program in the City of Stillwater from 2014 to 2017, and this includes all the levels that are in your report in that budget breakdown. It also includes the crack sealing, it includes the spot repairs, and it also, the reconstruction, rehabilitation, and preventative maintenance. So that's what we will accomplish with these additional 13 miles that we're proposing for this fiscal year, for what remains of this fiscal year. And this is the breakdown, 13.5 miles, I suppose. Preventative maintenance was that thin-service overlay. Crack sealing is also considered a type of preventative maintenance, but we split that out, because we usually do different vendors for that. So thin-service overlay, this is what we show here for preventative maintenance, and we can touch more miles for less cost per mile. And it, we're talking lane miles, so if you have a four-lane road, then you have four lane miles for that section of, that mile section of road. And that preventative maintenance, rehabilitation, and reconstruction, those are the, we have a graph that I'm going to show you here in a minute, that's, shows those three items broken out, that adds up to about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. And then the remainder of that, that 1.1 million dollars, that's not shown on the map, because basically, it's, it's those spot repairs, whether it's asphalt, concrete, and the, the crack sealing, which you can't really measure, you know, it's like a spider web sometimes, when you're trying to seal those cracks, and, and that's just temporary, until you can get that thin-service overlay back on top of it. So we do all levels of maintenance, depending on the asset, depending on the location, you know, the rights, treatment at the right time and the right place. And then we also need to support those first three, oh, well, the rehabilitation and reconstruction, we have to support that with a design, so that's built into that $400,000. We have to support the construction with testing. So that's built into that $400,000. We have to support the construction with testing and we have a contract for that to do the structural, sorry, the materials testing that we need to do along with those contracts. Make sure we have the right strategies in place, implemented correctly. And then inventory, this is the year for that five-year inventory. We do the inventory every five years to support this pavement management program. New data, updated data, because things change all across the city, so. This is what I said, those first three allocations, the preventative maintenance, the thin surface overlay, rehabilitation, reconstruction. We took those down, this, for the amended budget when we removed the money from the general fund, but we still have the half-cent sales tax to support. And we also use the general fund for finishing out those projects for fiscal year 15 and 16. So these are the projects that remain. We're following water in terms of when they do a project, we follow with the pavement project so that we're not just replacing a little strip of the street. We're gonna go in and replace the whole street once that infrastructure has been replaced underneath the road. And that's what we intend to do in the future. And they've done a few projects, so we're gonna follow with a few projects. And then we also need to have a project or a contract big enough to entice those large companies that do the thin surface overlay into town. So that's why you see a couple of large stretches of the blue. Get a big enough contract to let that happen in town. So the request for tonight is that the council approve the proposed budget for the revised fiscal year 17 pavement management program as presented here today, January 9, 2017, in your packet and in your report and on the screen, so. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Okay, it's time for questions. No?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. And of course, it's good to see what will be done. And we will look forward to increased revenues at another time so we can see a lot more done. I know it's been frustrating and hard.
And thank you for the overview.
You're welcome.
Okay, so no questions?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendations on CC-17-08. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, CC-17-08 is approved. That takes us to ordinances. Mr. Dorman on second reading.
Ordinance number 3356, an ordnancy zoning attractive land located at 2215 East 6th Avenue from IL Light Industrial District to CG Commercial General District.
Discussion, councilors. Okay, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. Ordinance number 3356.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. To adopt ordinance number 3356. Please vote.
It's on the board.
And motion number 3356 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. And that takes us to, you know, it's a big deal, Counselor Wedlake. It's a big deal to have your first one out of the way.
Off my show, wait, just a second.
And that was.
I don't wanna overstep.
Well, now that we're halfway done with the agenda, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding for a little bit. Reports from officers and boards, miscellaneous items from Mr. Dorman.
I think it's report, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Two items, mayor. First, the Stillwater Fire Department recently received a donation from members of the Pi Kappa Alpha fraternity. Stillwater Fire Department plans to use the donation to fund the purchase of smoke detectors. And those will be distributed to those in need around the city. On behalf of the city of Stillwater, I'd like to thank Pi Kappa Alpha for their donation and recognition of public safety.
Absolutely.
It's very kind of them and that's a very important thing. And if you don't have smoke detectors in your home, please get some or call the fire department and they can help you tell you where to locate them. Second item, I'd like to give you, hopefully you'll consider it, brief update on the strategic plan. Stillwater City Council formulated a strategic plan for 2015-17 with the following key projects. Coordinate search and hiring of a new city manager, review the city charter, comprehensive economic development policy, downtown development plan, SUA transfer policy, complete streets policy, audit policy with report templates for public-private partnerships, review public safety needs, review and update annexation plans, develop bonding strategy for long-term city needs, develop landscape maintenance standards for city property, prepare earthquake emergency guidelines. I'm pleased to report that all of these initiatives are complete or in progress. One we need help with. Those projects still in progress are comprehensive economic development policy. Rather than have a policy for just the city, we've pulled together a group of people from many community organizations to help develop a policy that can be used citywide and so that everybody understands what their roles are and how those roles mesh together. And hopefully, with a concerted effort, we can improve that in that area. The review of public safety needs is complete. We know what we need for a new fire station. Council received more information on this initiative and also other future city needs when staff prevents a bonding strategy for long-term city needs along with proposed budget in March. Unless you desire that to be moved up to a sooner study station, which would kick some other things out. You have on the agenda tonight to appoint a subcommittee to work with staff for review of citizen boards. And you heard the plan for auditing process for public-private partnerships. Council will hear your information on downtown development plan and a study session on January 30. Next meeting is a report on infrastructure management. I would like to tell you that I'm optimistic about the ability of that report, but it's a very expensive, very, very expensive proposition to digitize and inventory, infrastructure management and computerize that process, but you'll hear more about that next month. The one where we need help is strong neighborhood initiative, where we, there are, I'm not gonna tell you that there are not strong neighborhoods in Stillwater. There are a couple that really jump to mind. But in terms of those that are active, there's a couple. And we really need some help on direction in that particular area. Finally, and John, Dorman and I have talked about this a lot. Since the last annexation plan was developed, state law changes have significantly changed cities' ability to annex land. At the same time, laws governing utility extensions and rural water systems have also changed significantly. For these reasons, staff recommends annexation to be considered on a case-by-case basis with consideration given to the cost of providing services and the ability of the areas under consideration to produce sales tax. We really believe that is the proper policy and that we would bring any of those to the council on a case-by-case basis. Finally, staff awaits any new strategic initiatives council desires for the future.
How many would you like?
You know what, and I'm, this is gonna sound like breaking your arm, patting yourself on the back, but our marketing director, Sherry Fletcher, ran down a list of council, and I think you received a draft of that, of council achievements over the last year. And it makes you tired reading the thing. Those that await and probably will take the longest time is economic development policy. The other thing that's gonna take considerable time, if we want to be successful, is the bonding issue. And again, Sherry Fletcher has done some research on, through her network of other marketing directors, on how they market those issues. And we have been the proud recipient of a lot of information in that area. And we'll bring that to you as well when we come to that study session. But that's gonna take, if we want to be successful, a period of, a long period of time, market those efforts because the public needs to understand exactly what they're voting on. And we need to have every one of our ducks in a row on exactly what we're going to do with no, nothing left to speculation. And that's my report on that area and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And we agree, and I like that you updated us on just the accomplishments of the past year, right?
Right, and if you're ready, we'll post that to the website.
I would very much like that, just to let citizens see what we've been doing on their behalf.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And if, if the council at some point desires to get together and talk strategic planning again, let us know and we'll facilitate that for you.
We definitely want that.
Soon?
Time in. The next.
I was on council last time we did it, so it hasn't been.
It was cold and snowy. At one of the first meetings.
At Meridian?
Oh, that's right.
We were at Meridian, yeah.
What's the name, in like April or May?
It was, it was spring, early spring.
Well, I'm glad we can remember. How about a year from the date of the last one or?
That may have come and gone. I'm not sure.
I don't think so, because I was, I was on and I didn't.
We'll take a look and we'll send you some proposed dates.
Yes, sounds good.
Patty, please.
Okay, council members, do you have any news?
I do. For people who are just in the doldrums of the winter months, if you don't know what to do, absolutely, check out the Stillwater Public Library. It provides winter programs for children, teens and adults. Each club has age-appropriate activities, reading suggestions and prizes, even adult prizes. And they're pretty decent too, so. For more information, go to thelibrary.stillwater.org.
Great, thank you. Counselor Zanotti?
It is that time of year where the Stillwater Police Department would like to remind property and business owners to renew their alarm permits or to register new alarms between now and Tuesday, February 28, 2017. There is a $6 annual fee for each alarm registered and a late fee that's past February 28, 2017, of $25 for alarms registered March 1st or later.
Very good, good information. Counselor Joyce?
This Thursday, January 12, from 5 to 7 p.m. is Meet Your Legislators Night at the Stillwater Public Library. It's an opportunity to have an informal visit with your state legislators, city councilors, county commissioners, school board members and lots of other folks around town. It's a, it's a good night. I've been to this thing before and it gives you a good chance to actually sit and talk to some of the folks who are making decisions on your behalf.
Five to seven?
Five to seven, Thursday night, Public Library.
Thursday night, yes. Okay, Counselor Wedlake, do you have some news?
All right, here we go. So tickets are now available for the 12th Annual Dancing with Daddy event, Saturday, February 11. All ages are welcome. To put a plug out there, we went to this last year and it was, I think we went to the Red Rose offering and it was, it was wonderful. My daughter loved it. Tickets are only available online at stillwater.org and must be purchased by February 9. Tickets will not be sold at the door this year, so get them early.
Sold out last year.
Yeah.
Yes, it's been a great event for many years.
It was cool, very, a lot of fun.
Put it on your calendar now. And Vice Mayor Darlington, do you have one more?
I do have one more announcement. This coming Monday is Martin Luther King Day and there will be a lovely celebration. We have a, we, a couple of years ago, we formed an ad hoc committee that wanted to expand the Martin Luther King celebration. They've done a great job. This coming Monday, meeting at 6:30 at the library, the march, if the weather is appropriate, we'll go up Duck Street, cross 8th Street to the First Baptist Church. The program will actually be at First Baptist. Refreshments, great speakers, wonderful, community-wide choir and singing. If, you know, pay attention to the news, look on the website, see what the weather says. And you can just go to First Baptist if you wanna just be there.
This is a family-friendly event that really shouldn't be missed if you live in Stillwater. It's amazing, the music is amazing, the messages are amazing, so I encourage everybody to.
And instead of one, one speaker this year, they're having four different speakers, four different ages of persons representing different groups. And actually, our former mayor's son is one of the speakers, so it's.
Very good. Well, I encourage everybody to make sure you have that on your calendar. Bring your children, family members, neighbors. It's well worth it.
There'll be hundreds of cookies.
Okay.
Thousands perhaps.
Any questions or inquiries? Okay, that moves us to appointments and we have several appointments, but I will start with the first one. Item A, appointment of the student representative to Sister Cities Council. I would like to nominate Alex Wall, an eighth grader at Stillwater Junior High. Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll get him, I'll get him next. Okay, we have a motion and a second to have Alex Wall become the student representative. Please vote. And with a five-to-zero vote, Alex Wall is the new Sister Cities Council Representative, student representative, I should say. Okay, our next one is appointment of a counselor to serve on the Stillwater Medical Center Trust Nominating Committee with me. I'm a member right now. This doesn't happen very often, but as a new board member goes off, comes on, then we have to nominate. We do that with the hospital board as well. And do I have, does anyone have a nomination? I would like to nominate the vice mayor. I think it just makes a good fit for the mayor and the vice mayor to be on this. If you will accept?
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a nomination and a second for Vice Mayor Darlington to be on the Hospital Stillwater Medical Center Trust Nominating Committee. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, Vice Mayor, you are now on that nominating committee. The next appointment is an appointment of a subcommittee to work with staff on boards and committee recommendations. I, at this time, would like to nominate Counselor Zanotti and Counselor Joyce to serve on this subcommittee.
Second.
Is that okay with you?
For whatever it's worth, I'm assured by the city attorney and the other person on that committee that this will be a win-and-done meeting.
Yes, I'm in.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Counselor Zanotti and Counselor Joyce to work one time. And with that, with a vote.
I vote yes twice.
With a vote of five to zero, they are confirmed to work on the subcommittee to work with staff on boards and committee recommendations. And finally, we have the appointment of an alternate municipal judge. At this time, I nominate Matt Devlin. Mr. Dorman, any, are we good with my nomination of Matt Devlin?
Be a great choice.
Okay.
This is, this is just a spot in the case that the Judge Ron cannot serve. So he may sit this year, he might not, but he has agreed to accept the position if so nominated.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to nominate, or to have Matt Devlin be the alternative municipal judge. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, Matt Devlin is the alternate municipal judge now. Is there a motion to adjourn, Counselor Wedlake?
Motion to adjourn.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
I thought we were going to let him hang on that.
We have a motion and a second.
Would you repeat that motion, please?
You have a microphone.
Motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. And we will vote with a vote of five to zero. We are out of city council meeting at... 8:00 p.m. That moves us to the Stillwater Utilities Authority agenda. I now call that meeting to order. And on the consent docket, trustees, is there anybody who wishes to remove an item, or is there a motion?
Question to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent docket to approve. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. General counsel?
Three items tonight, Mayor. First, request an executive session pursuant to 2501 Subsection 307b3 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property. Second, request a executive session pursuant to 2501 Subsection 307b4 to engage in confidential communication regarding possible litigation involving the Robert Owens Kearns Trust and claims filed by CCC Inc. It is my opinion that in either one of these matters, public disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process these claims and/or conduct an investigation and/or to prosecute, defend, any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. And, Mr. McNichol, as general manager?
One item, Mayor. We would solicit your input. I know there were a couple of reports in this week's packet, both in the SUA and in regular council, that created some questions, and I think as staff, we try very hard to provide you with information that's understandable, and part of the problem is kind of a forest-in-the-trees thing. We're immersed in this stuff. We kind of understand the movement of different things, and would solicit your input to how we might be able to improve in that area. We, we want you to have absolutely all the information that you need when you make a decision, and we want it to be understandable, so would solicit your help in that area. Thank you.
Okay. And trustees, discussion. Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we are now in executive session.